Twenty twenty four town council meeting. My name is Junior Mayor Carter Burke. I am officially calling this meeting to, this meeting to order. Dang, that's loud.
That is really loud.
Ms. Clark, would you please do vocal?
Yes, sir, I will. Councilman Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins. Is not present. Mayor James and Junior Mayor Burke, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can you please stand to the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
And before I have Junior Mayor Burke continue, I just want to introduce him a little bit. He was the winner of our local If I Were Mayor contest. And he is going to read his essay, his award-winning essay. And then we are going to approve the agenda. So, uh, Junior Mayor, oh, oh, we've got a little, see, we're eating. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and read. All right, you ready?
If I were mayor, I'd be in charge of my city, La Plata, Maryland. I would, I would get voted in, well, an election. As mayor, my responsibility to give advice, make decisions, make decisions, spend tax money appropriately, and have tough skin because people aren't always nice to you. And they might get to you. First thing I would do as mayor is help the homeless people. To help the homeless people, I would use tax money or have a big fundraiser. Just, um, just a second. There we go. To help these people, I would use the profit to purchase canned goods, healthy food, bottles of water, even little candy. After getting all the food to the homeless people, I would use the rest of the money to help people who didn't have homes. I would get them all warm tents where I, where they could live. I built, while I was building a large building, while I was building. Buildings, built it. For them to live in. I would, then they would all have their own bedroom, their own bathroom, and downstairs, a snack bar to always have food. An exercise room and inside pool, they should be healthy and have fun, too. It would help them, I would help them find jobs and opportunities so that they could make money, buy a house of their own. As mentioned earlier, I would be a very good mayor for La Plata because I would put the needs of other people first.
Nice job. Thank you very much. All right, so next on our agenda is right here.
Counsel, I'm looking to a, for a motion to approve in the agenda. Yes? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposeds? Motion carries. Counsel, if you have a chance to read the minute, I will entertain the motion. Yes?
We accept the meeting minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposeds? Motion carries.
Okay, so we have a, you're doing great. We have a proclamation for Small Cities Month, and I would like to read that. Whereas small cities and towns under fifty thousand population are the home to millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority, majority of municipalities across the United States. And whereas small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provision of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support programs and legislation that strengthen small communities. And whereas state governments are partners in the success of small towns and cities and must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthen communities. And whereas organizations, businesses, and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in. And whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for a renewed intergovernmental, intergovernmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small-town America. And whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared June twenty twenty four as Small Cities Month. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty four as Small Cities Month and encourage President Biden, Congress, state governments, organizations, businesses, and all citizens to recognize this event and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens. And this is signed by myself, Mayor Janine James, Councilman David Winkler, Councilman Matthew Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, and Councilman Dave Jenkins. All right, so.
Next on the agenda. Director Kennedy.
Thank you, Junior Mayor.
And before Director Kennedy, there was a little bit skip here. Is there anybody here who would like to speak for its public comment?
We were just, we were on a roll.
If you would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limit, and to limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody?
Director Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I start? Thank you, Mayor, Junior Mayor, and Counsel. What I've, what I've got on the agenda today is the first reading for a proposed ordinance to change our tuition reimbursement program for the town, to try to streamline it, modernize it, kind of have a streamlined process, bringing it all under the HR umbrella, as opposed to scattered around the departments like it currently is. So, some of the proposes that we've got in here is to, part of it's already happened where we've moved the fiscal aspect of it under the HR budget. Part of the reason why my budget went up like six hundred percent this year. But it's also to have a centralized location for the requests, for ensuring that we have the proper budget for it, to make sure that it meets the requirements for what's an approved coursework, that it's relevant to public administration or government work, or their specific role within this, within the organization. Streamline so that we have the same kind of document, clarifying some of the time limits for submittal and approvals, and then also to track it and cap the budget to match the IRS's current taxable income rate.
Right, I'll open the floor for Counsel. Any questions? Councilman Winkler?
What is the taxable cap rate? How much, how much are we willing to?
Since nineteen seventy-eight, the IRS has set it at five thousand two hundred and fifty.
And then I know I.
Per calendar year.
And I know I had emailed you, and you have a six-month retention post. Reimb, so if they finish in the May semester, then they have to remain for another six months, or?
Or reimburse the town.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So can you give an example of covered reimbursable expenses that you've been able to clarify?
So, a lot of it, we've based, as the world is shifting away from a lot of like brick-and-mortar classes, we've added the language to include what online schools and colleges are using when they refer to technology fees or resource materials. For example, my school, my technology fee covers the cost of books that are all in electronic format now, and that's just part of the course, rather than having to go to a bookstore, find a used book because the new ones are too expensive, and, you know, try to wait for delivery and all that. It's all included in that fee. So we made sure that we included language to capture those situations for, you know, as we move to online, more and more online students. And I think, I'm pretty sure most of the ones that are currently enrolled in school are all online as well.
Can you give us some examples of the types of folks we've taken that help, you know, further their education and development?
Most of our students, most of our students right now are in the police department. And so they're taking courses that relate to criminal justice, law enforcement, psychology, any course that's part of a degree program that is regular, that is covered. So if they're getting a criminal justice degree, but their elective is underwater poodle-fluffing, like, we would let that go because you have to have an elective as part of, as part of the degree program. So that is taken into consideration that some of those courses will seem a little odd, but they're, you know, required for the, for the totality of the program.
And the reimbursable costs that Councilman Winkler asked about, the fifty-two-hundred and change, that's per class or per annual year?
Under year.
Okay. Is the, is the streamlining of this, I mean, what's the expected effect for our employees?
One point of contact mostly, so that the, the requests are coming to one place. They're notified if the, if there's enough money in the budget for it. They're notified what the remaining available funds are for their schooling. And then also, once they've completed it, all the course, all the requirements for reimbursement, as far as their receipts and proof of grade, will still come to one point. And then, then from there, I'll release it and let the accounting department know that they can reimburse the employee at that time. So it's, it's really a one point for questions, for, you know, paperwork, for, for everything. So they don't have to, and it's less touchpoints, you know, with different people giving different information as well.
And as you stated, it's not a, an increase to our budget, but more of a folding in?
Correct, correct. A lot of the, a lot of what we, we took out of all the other departments and put them under mine. And right now, we are, the, the approved budget was for eight students. And right now, I know we have five. So there's some wiggle room for additional people if they start school later in the year. And also, some of the students have already taken courses for the first semesters of the year. So they're already accounted for in this current budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. So, couple of questions. You're really good about educating and informing the staff on changes. So will, so whatever's not in the existing policy or whatever's in the existing policy that will move to the, from the new policy, will that be shared with staff?
Yes, I've already have an email drafted and ready to go in hopes that this gets approved.
Okay, then the other question that I have is, you said that we are, we are budgeted for eight students?
Yes.
So you cap the number of students that can apply for reimbursement? Or is it that you only have eight that are applying in school right now?
So we based it under, we figured, okay, we know we have so many students now. We projected a few more in case anybody wants to start later in the year, and then calculated based on that number. However, if somebody skips a semester and there's, and then somebody else starts, then the funds will be shifted based on available budget, not, it's not set aside per person.
So, but what I'm asking, is there a cap on the number of employees that can attend?
Not at this time.
Eight, do we have twelve? Do we budget for eight, twelve, or do we budget for how many?
We, we budgeted for the assumption that eight, the same eight people were all year.
Okay, so, so if the same eight do attend, and I decide I want to take classes, I cannot?
That is, it would not be reimbursable because we wouldn't have any funds in the budget.
Okay, okay. So basically, if we have eight students now, and they're in a degree program, they're not going to finish until maybe two years, at the least, let's say. Then that means no one else can, you know, is eligible for reimbursement until those eight complete the course.
Well, no, it would be, it would be more of like a first-come, first-served. So if somebody takes a spring semester, that's a new student, and then an existing student takes a break and doesn't start again until the winter semester, then there may not be a budget to pay for their winter semester course.
So what if, but what if they go straight, I'm making the assumption that they continue through, then that means nobody else can apply for tuition reimbursement?
I think also it's done on an annual basis. So as part of the budget process, if we see there's more demand, we could.
Then, yeah, we would absolutely, yeah, we have more students.
Meet that demand and provide that to our, to our employees.
Correct, if we have more students, then next year I'll budget for ten or fifteen or however many more we, we know we have. And hopefully, you know, we get a heads up, you know, if people are starting.
And the last question, you said that it's from, it's been five thousand two hundred plus since when?
Like the late seventies.
Is that the same, is that the government's amount?
Yes, that is the IRS's amount.
It's been the same amount?
Yes, there's, there's talk that it's going to go up soon, but until it does, we're.
Were we always five thousand two hundred, whatever, or no?
No.
Were we raising ourselves to that?
No, when it was in the, when it was by the departments, it was however much the department asked for in their budget.
So it was capped?
Correct. And just for reference as well, I looked it up recently, and the tax, so anything over that fifty-two-fifty number is taxed at thirty to thirty-five percent. So it is pretty significant for the student. And, you know, the administrative tracking of it is hard.
Okay, okay. In the, the list of programs that we will, that are, that we will approve, you will let the students know what those are as well? You're saying, I think you said, police?
Most are police right now.
And public administration? And are those the only two?
No, no, if, if it's relevant to their job, it will be approved, right? There, there's not a grand list of yes or no. It's, it will be, you know, based on the person and what their role is and where their career development path wants to be. So if it's somebody that's looking to move into a more public administrative role, you know, and it makes sense in their career path, then absolutely, we would let them do that. Yeah, we want to encourage that.
All right, thank you so much.
And reimbursement is also based on the grade that they earn.
That is correct.
So if they earn, is it, if I recall it, they earn anything? I know my kids will say Cs get degrees, but I don't know if they get reimbursed for Cs.
At eighty percent.
Eighty percent. And then, so A obviously is a hundred percent.
B is a hundred, and then if it's a pass or fail, it's either you get it or you don't. Okay.
All right.
Do I have a consensus to move this forward? Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes. All right, we will see this in legislation in just a little bit. Thank you. Next up is.
Director Harrington?
Good evening, Junior Mayor, Mayor and Counsel. So for this, the Forest Conservation Code update, the Maryland General Assembly passed HB fifteen-eleven, altering certain provisions of the Forest Conservation Act. There were certain changes that were done last year, but due to a lot of confusion and updates that weren't provided by DNR, they did go ahead and push the majority of the changes until July first of twenty twenty-six. However, there were a couple of changes that needed to take place this year. So the Department of Natural Resources is going to be required to provide an updated technical manual by December thirty-first of this year. They did have certain provisions related to the establishment of forest mitigation banks, the definition of a qualified conservation area, and the afforestation exemption for solar photovoltaic facilities were added, as well as the applicability of certain priority retention areas. It, the most recent bill clarifies the allowable time for DNR to provide the critical support and information jurisdictions need to come into compliance with the local law. And there are a few other changes as well. So for the town's proposed revisions that are before you tonight for legislation, the following definitions were added for the qualified conservation area. It has a couple of areas. I also added solar photovoltaic facility. That wasn't a requirement, but I figured that if we were going to add that to the code, it would make sense to define it. As well as under the proposed revisions for the transitional provisions, we did add specifications for the solar vol, I can't say that word, solar photovoltaic facility and certain granting of certificates before July first of twenty twenty-five. A forest conservation plan that's approved prior to July first of twenty twenty-six may be exempt from certain changes that are happening. And revision to any plan or permit described within the code that does not alter the proposed actual limits of disturbance may also be exempted from certain standards. As far as the afforestation/reforestation, there were some certain changes to the regulations that they, that they included, including up to a fifty percent of the afforestation or reforestation requirement as far as credit being granted. And then there was a section that was added for local jurisdictions and public comments for certain afforestations, which is an interesting addition to the code. And there's lots more under the Forest Mitigation Bank. I won't read all of these, but it does stipulate where priority forest retention areas are. Mainly that's in the stream, stream buffers of any forest that has interior dwelling species, floodplain, those types of things. So that kind of sums up the specific changes. There will be more changes, most likely coming before July first of twenty twenty-six. But until that time, we're waiting for DNR and the state to come out with specific guidance and updating the technical manual so we know exactly what we're doing. There was a lot of confusion around this update. So I thought I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have for this, this code revision.
Counsel? Councilman Winkler?
So actually, your, your last statement answered it because, aside from the definitions, my, my first question is, is what is the impact? How does this impact the town and what we either are required to do or what we may be required to do in the future? But you're saying they really haven't defined that?
Yeah, so when they introduced the bill last year, it was extremely confusing. And I cannot remember which jurisdiction it was, but they actually went to the Maryland General Assembly this year, and they said, whoa, whoa, whoa. You know, you're asking us to update all of this stuff, and you have not given us any, you know, information. Do you have an updated technical manual? You don't have a model ordinance? We don't know what half of this means? So they did end up pushing it out for two years, and they said, okay, well, we'll push all this bigger stuff. You just have to kind of update these few things and add a definition. So once DNR comes out with a technical manual and a model ordinance, we'll really understand what's being proposed.
We have to pass it in order to see what's in it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We've heard that before.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Harrington, so updating the manual and implementation are two different things. So do you think that you will have any challenges implementing the parts of the code that you're able to revise right now?
No. No, they're very minor, and we basically already do it anyway. It's just clarification of language.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any, can, a consensus to move this, this legislation forward? Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Ward? Mayor James?
Thank you very much. We'll see you.
Next on the agenda, Director Stahl?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, we bring forward our street sweeping bid that we put out to public bid about a month or so ago. And the, we received four bids. But I just wanted to explain to you a little bit about this. Actually, our street sweeping is actually part of our stormwater management program and is actually required under the new MS four program. So the MS four permit, this year, we are actually getting additional credit for doubling our street sweeping. So we are doubling the amount of street sweeping that you see included in this bid, and that's why we put it back out to bid. So what I bring before you tonight, the winning bidder, was TNT Sweeping, who has been doing the street sweeping here in town for twenty years or more. It certainly predates me in, in my time. We were very limited in the number of streets that we did, mainly only the main streets in town. But occasionally, when we needed additional sweeping, we would get them to do that as well. The winning bid from TNT was twenty-seven thousand and some change. And I would recommend approval of this, and it will be taken care of as part of our MS four program, so.
Thank you very much. And wow, what a difference from one seventy-five at the high and twenty seven, twenty-eight. Wow, 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 what a difference.
No, that's, that's certainly why. And, and to be honest, some of the bids, as you've seen recently, I mean, on some of these bids, like Tillman Lake, you know, five, four hundred ninety-two thousand up to two-point-seven million for the same project, and you just, that's why you go out to bid. The other thing that I would also just like to say while I have the microphone is that we did complete Clark's Run One pump station on Monday, and you all had approved that, but that is in and functional, and is functioning very, very well. So we took a forty-five-year-old pump station and replaced it with a brand-new pump station. We will also be doing Dig Circle Pump Station on the twenty-fourth, and we will be doing Patuxent Court on the twenty-sixth. And when we finish all of these pump stations, which are all either on their way to completion, currently Southwest Quadrant is operational. Triumph Pump Station is up and operational. We are working on Mary Ball, and we're bringing the pumps for the Roswick Pump Station to you here very soon to upgrade that. So we will have seven very, very new pump stations in town, which is quite an accomplishment and was a big help from ARPA funding. Sorry to bring that, but I just thought it would be a good time to say. Heather?
Counsel? Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Street sweeping, but we received credits. Will those credits help offset the additional costs? It's okay. Three, one. You can, it should be working. So my question is, will those credits help offset the additional cost?
The, well, there's really no offsetting of the cost of MS four. MS four is very costly to us, so. But it is an additional credit that we get towards our MS four. So, but it is an additional credit that we get towards our MS four um, compliance for our permit. And yes, it is costing additional money to do that, but it is giving us the additional credit that we need for the MS four. Permit that we have. So, there, there really isn't an offsetting cost, it's just a cost that we're having to endure. But it is giving us the additional credit that we need for our MS four program.
Okay, so the way you presented it initially, it sounded like it was a benefit to us to do the additional street sweeping because of the credit.
It do, it does, it gives us that additional, but there's no offset. I mean, some of the things that I have talked about with the council is these on, we still don't know, one of the things the state, you know, on, not unlike Director Harrington's. Uh, thing, the state is still trying to figure out what they're going to do on the next MS four. Uh, project or program, permit that they're going to issue, they don't know yet what they're going to require for the next. Which will start in twenty twenty-six and run through twenty thirty. We don't know whether it's going to be thi, this permit that we're under right now, we needed to do upgrades of twenty percent of our impervious surface. We don't know yet what the next one is going to be.
So I apologize if this is um, redundant for the rest of the council, but I, then I, I'm not clear on the purpose of the credits. What, how, how many credits do we need, do we know that? And then when you say give additional, how many additional towards what we need are we getting?
What, the, the MS four program has numerous pieces. And we have to send in a report every year in order to get the status of compliance. Which we just got, we just received the credit or the compliance letter from last year. And I'd be happy to share that with the council and they point out different things that we needed to be able to do. Um, in this time, we did proffer to do additional street sweeping to try to meet some of the needs for MS four. And what that's doing is it removes sediment and, and dirt and debris off of the roads. And therefore doesn't wash into the bay. And so we're getting that additional stormwater credit in order to meet annual compliance for our MS four permit. We project this forward, I mean, that's what we've asked them and said, you know, can we get additional credit for doing this? And they've said, yes, we can get that for doing, we're doubling our street sweeping. It is part of our annual compliance that we submit as part of our certification. And I think you've heard where we've submit the letter to them with all of the things we're doing for compliance. We do that every October. Um, we just got the compliance letter back from MDE from our submission in October. Um, and it's, it's just one of the additional costs that these pieces of legislation throw on us. There's, you know, more and more things that we're going to have to do and I, and I've said it's. You know, the, the costs do add up over time. I mean, it's, it's going to be an additional cost, there's no two ways about it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so just a couple of questions, it, it, I feel like I, I know the answer, but I wouldn't be doing my due diligence. The next closest bid is about seventy percent higher and obviously Madam Mayor alluded to the point that the highest was a egregiously high. Is there any difference in the range of services provided that would?
No, we, we actually, you know, we put the street list together. Um, I actually called TNT uh, to verify this. And said, you know, you realize that this doubled the amount of streets that we're doing from last year. And they said, no, um, they could do it for that dollar amount. Uh, they felt they had a good and reasonable bid because we've, anytime I have a winning bidder, I always give them the opportunity to withdraw their bid. Because what we don't want to do is enter into a contract with someone who's losing money because they will change order you to death. And so we did verify back with them that they were happy with their bid number and that they could do the job for that amount. So I'm not unhappy with the bid, they're not unhappy with the bid. And so we would certainly recommend that you move forward with approving this.
And, and this is just for, uh, uh, I think I read it, it's, it's once a month, minimum twelve times a year to hit. So, does the town, for lack of a better word, bill out or charge back to a property owner in the instance where? You know, an egregious amount, like let's say a developer or, or a neighborhood or a street, somebody's doing some, building a pool, you know, everybody's going to build a swimming pool. And they cause this, it can be directly attributed to the mud on the streets, is, is that something that the town charges back for?
We would require them to do the cleanup, we would maybe suggest to them vendors that they could use. But no different than if a contractor's putting mud on the road.
Right.
We will stop the job or then make them come in, that would be something that Aaron or Mitchell would write them a side question. And we would require them to come in and hire a street sweeping company. If we have to clean it up, yes, we would absolutely send them a bill. But to be honest, that would be of last resort, we would generally make them go through a private contractor themselves and handle it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a consent, can? Consensus to move this legislation forward? Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes, thank you very much.
That brings us to legislation. Mr. Manuel?
Could we um, start with uh, resolution and just, I'm sorry. Get a consent, uh, get a vote on that while um, when Chonger is fired?
All right, we will go to five point three on the agenda, which is Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen. Street Sweeping Services, uh, this item is for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning street sweeping services for the purpose of authorizing the town manager. To enter into a contract agreement for street sweeping services in all matters relating thereto.
Thank you very much, do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-four dash fourteen as written?
Madam Mayor, Junior Mayor, I um, make a motion to accept the, the street sweeping uh, resolution as written. Uh, twenty-four dash fourteen for uh, adoption.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Any discussion? On favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry. Thank you. Mr. Manuel?
I'll give Councilman Chonger time to get back to his seat. Junior, Junior Mayor Burke and Madam Mayor, next item is Legislation five point one, Ordinance twenty-four zero nine, Town Personnel System. This item is for a first reading and cons, uh, for introduction. An ordinance concerning town personnel system for the purpose of amending certain personnel policies in the town's personnel manual. And all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you.
Next item, five point two, Ordinance twenty-four dash eleven. Resource Protection Standards, this item is also for a first reading and for introduction. An ordinance concerning resource protection standards for the purpose of comprehensively revising and recodifying. Town of La Plata Development Regulations relating to floodplain management and flood hazard areas. Uh, forest conservation, storm drainage, stream resources, wetlands, resources. Steep slopes, hydric soils and highly erodible soils and rare, threatened and endangered species and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much.
Your business? Councilman Winkler?
No, nothing to report.
Councilman Tron, Tronger?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have some messages here from the Keep La Plata Beautiful Commission. Number one is we are celebrating the installation of public art at the Bird City Pocket Park by Shannon Wang. Our local artist, business owner and Chair of the KLPB's Arts Work Group. We have a celebration also in order as far as planting over one hundred native flowering plants at the Star Memorial Garden. Uh, Chris Wagner donated many plants and used a grant from the La Plata Garden Club to buy the rest. Uh, Ms. McConnell, Jess McConnell with the Keep La Plata Beautiful Chair. And Director Phipps helped plant most of them. Uh, Chris also selected and planted most of the bird-friendly shrubs and trees on the north side of the Bird City Pocket Park. As well as the Train Station Museum, Will's Memorial Park and Town Hall. So we're grateful for all of our residents contributing and local business owners to the beautification of our beautiful town.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brian Ward?
No updates, the planning commission didn't need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor James?
Thank you very much, so we have uh, kicked off our Friday night summer concert. And we had, we started off with Girl Crush Well Attended, we were inundated with um, all of our residents from near and far coming in for Bobby McKees. And last week we had the Beach Bums, which was very well attended as well. And that was also the weekend of King Kamehameha over at the um, farmer's markets. Uh, so on Friday, we have Hometown Band. We also have, so plan to be around here for the Fourth of July because we will have our Fourth of July celebration. And we also have coming up in the next couple of weeks is the um, Maryland Independent is going to be celebrating a hundred and fifty years in existence. So we will have something uh, to recognize that as well. And um, we will have a junior mayor here next week from Matula. She was also a winner of the local If I Were Mayor contest. And uh, that completes my report. Um, Junior Mayor Burke, very nice job tonight, thank you very much for joining us, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Remove to adjourn.
I got so hard.
All right, there you go, thank you so much.
As a word, I, I, I know.
There you go.